We are now back in session. The next item on the agenda is Item 10, that is General Public Comments. I will call the first six speakers up and be prepared to speak. You can come to the front. There is seating available for you. Don Schrader, Evelyn Felton, Laura Dale, Art Tenenbaum, Deborah Blanton, and Jose Barraza. Next six speakers will be E. Ward, Leon Garcia, Wiley Simon, Nick, Rudolph Serrano, and Anna Moran. Once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. I think Mr. Tenenbaum, I think you were first in that previous group. Go ahead and proceed. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Sanchez, members of the council. I want to talk about a couple of big problems that the city is facing. Six months ago, certain members of the city council praised what's-his-name for doing such a good job on the budget. Then we found out we were $40 million further, $40, $50 million further in the red. Then we had to have this post-haste tax increase put through. And I read this weekend about the $45 million going to our police department. We'd best end up with a damn good police department. And I want to thank all the good cops, all the good people in Albuquerque Police Department who continue to work really hard. The other issue is the Albuquerque Rapid Transit fiasco. It's a calamity. Now, there's a certain city councillor who was very acrimonious with a couple of stakeholders earlier this evening regarding the IDO. He happens to represent the district I've lived in for the past year and a half. By far, in my belief, the worst city councillor that's ever represented me in Albuquerque, and it's unfortunate. Well, this is the man who, again, tonight, said that some of the problems with the ART project were relatively minor. And that's not very inspiring in terms of confidence because Councilman Benton, three months ago, was saying that these things were really not important, they're to be expected. Well, no, these things are not to be expected. The Yartrisco Station was at a four-degree angle deviation, which is about the same as the famous Leaning Tower of Pisa. The ART project is a failure in its design, funding, planning, construction, and operational equipment procurement.
Next speaker is E. Ward, followed by Leon Garcia, followed by Wiley Simon. Welcome.
Excuse me.
Okay, we put that first group? Go ahead and proceed.
I was waiting for Mr. Schreger to come up.
Okay, go ahead and proceed then. Ms. Felton?
Evelyn Felton, President AINEZ Neighborhood Association. This is about the Wyoming-Minole intersection, which we have been informed by Municipal Development is getting a major reconfiguration. But neither District Seven Coalition President David Hogawood nor I can find anyone who will tell us the rationale for this, nor the rationale for doing it right now. Two of the changes are major, and we don't know how they're going to do one of them. One of them is to add a right turn lane where unspecified. The other one is to close Victor Circle, that's the little curving cutoff between Minole and Wyoming. We can understand that they don't like circles, no high circle is being closed. But this one goes into a dedicated lane on Wyoming. And you still are going to have a lane taken away between Minole and this little circle outlet. We have tried to find out from city officials. I have found out that Municipal Development talked with the corporate office of Breakmasters, and they informed the Abruzzo family, which owns Hoffman Town, they were going to do this. The Abruzzo family relayed to us that they don't know why they're doing it. So I'm coming as a last resort here. Mr. Hogawood and our Vice President have asked for someone from Municipal Development to come to the April 6th District Seven Coalition meeting, but we haven't gotten any reply. We would just like to know, since it's our intersection, what's going on? That doesn't seem too much to ask.
Councilor Gibson, I think, has a comment or a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Felton. So this has been on my radar a little bit. I didn't know anything about it either. I'm aware of the intersection of Minole and Eubank.
Right. I knew about that one.
But not Minole and Wyoming. So that was the news to me.
It's a surprise to all of us.
So, and I still don't know anything more. But we have some people here who I think that we might be able to get an answer from. Sunalay, do you, Ms. Nayer, could you possibly find out from the DMD who's evidently been having conversations about getting rid of the free right on Minole and Wyoming? Could you do that for us?
Ms. Nayer?
Council President Sanchez, Councilor Gibson, yes, we'd be happy to do that. And I'll also make sure that they get the message about the April 6th Coalition meeting that the last speaker mentioned.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felton.
It's really unsettling, I can tell you.
Thank you. Next speaker is E. Ward, or you have a previous speaker. Go ahead and proceed, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jose Barraza. Let me just start off by saying that I once desired to be an officer for the APD Department. I even took a police service aid class during my senior year of high school. And I was really interested. I met many respected officers and while also learning the different units within the department. But once I started college, I decided to switch my major to psychology because, because as many hours are spent on the streets of Albuquerque, I feel like there's still trouble dealing with the less fortunate and mentally ill. And I feel like, well, in the end, I do have a lot of respect for the officers out there because, in the end, they have a difficult career. But I believe with the right training, the determination to help the less unfortunate and mentally ill, we can even help the lives who dedicate themselves to law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barraza.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. These comments do refer to the ABCDC Project IDO. And I'm glad to hear that you will continue to entertain amendments, because some of the, a major one is the whole focus of increasing density, particularly housing density that's been promoting this. And I just want to point out that Counselor Benton, near the early part of this project, pointed out that there is weak in migration to Albuquerque and a large stock of empty housing. Thus, the development will cannibalize residents from existing city neighborhoods and commercial zones and contribute to their decline. He was referring to the Santa Alina argument, but I don't see how you can make that argument to oppose Santa Alina and make that same argument while supporting increased density in housing and including removing the caps from building heights for very large apartments. With regard to addressing concerns about transparency, I think there is an issue, this is from ABCDC staff, talking, discussing avoiding putting pieces about making decisions whether or not to address something in the record. Let's see, I'll skip that one. Oh, and the CPAs and community identities and stuff like that. I do want to point out that there was a reference by project planners of IDO calling it a can of worms, or of community identity. And finally, one of the exceptions to the 3% cap increase for real property taxes, a property that's had its zoning status changed by changing the zoning of every structure in the city, have you...
Go ahead and finish your sentence.
Have you opened up all property owners to the risk of higher property taxes by doing that? Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Garcia, Wiley Simon, Nick, Rudy Serrano, Rudolph Serrano, welcome.
Welcome, President, Councilor Sanchez. Let me see if this thing is working. I'll just go ahead. Okay. Good evening. I'm here to support decriminalization of drugs. You know, one of the biggest problems that I've been pushing to this council is the Mexican cartel and our relationships with Mexico. Because Mexico is a good partner for us. Actually, according to the Gumbel Agreement that we have with Mexico, and also the Western Export Control for conventional arms and dual use of goods and technologies from 1996, if we're going to a war with Russia and Europe anywhere, we depend on Mexico, you know, to succeed in our wars. So if we don't decriminalize marijuana, we don't stop to stop the cartel from functioning. This has to be an effort between both countries. And decriminalizing marijuana is one way to stop the flukes that is opening the road to higher drugs like cocaine and heroin that is killing thousands of American people. You know, I don't do drugs, I don't like the drugs, I know it's bad for our community in many sense, you know? But other people think different. But these are the citizens that will get affected, you know, if we don't help Mexico. Citizen General Electric with 147 million, Citizen IBM with 106 million, Boeing, United Technologies, Lockheed Martin, Honeywell International, General Dynamics, Northrop Grumman, Raytheon Flower, Computer Sciences, Eltri Communications, Motorola, KRB, Boots, just to mention some. We have also Eaton, Aerospace, Textron, Cessna, Aerocopter. All these are partners that are getting affected by not legalizing marijuana.
Thank you. Anna Moran, followed by Riley Escalada, followed by Sharik Farid Abdullah, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Councilor Sanchez. Good evening, councilors. My name is Anna Moran, and I'm a field organizer with the ACLU of New Mexico. The ACLU urges the city council to pass ordinance 18-12 to decrease penalties for adults who possess small amounts of marijuana. We know that enormous and sometimes permanent harm is done to those individuals and snard each year in the city of Albuquerque under current law, which makes criminals out of ordinary citizens and saddles them with criminal records and fines that hinder their ability to carry out their daily life, including barriers to employment, education, and housing. This ordinance is a powerful first step to push back against laws that have deeply impacted, in particular, poor communities of color. Across the nation, there is extreme racial disparity in the enforcement of marijuana laws. In ACLU report, "The War on Marijuana in Black and White" examined all 50 states from 2001 to 2010 and found that marijuana use is roughly equal among blacks and whites, yet blacks are four times more likely to be arrested for marijuana possession. Here in Burnaleo County, we see similar results. Preliminary data released last year shows that black and Hispanics individuals are far more likely to be arrested for drug charges than their white counterparts. Therefore, the city of Albuquerque should support this resolution as an important step to ending the devastating impact that marijuana arrests have on people's lives. It is needlessly, it has needlessly entangled hundreds of thousands of people in the criminal justice system, has a staggeringly disproportionate impact on communities of color, and comes at a tremendous human and financial cost. The ACLU of New Mexico urges city council...
Excuse me, your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Riley Escalada, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Riley Escalada, and it's an honor to address the city council. I'm a community organizer and human rights activist that has been personally to Standing Rock in Flint, Michigan. I stand and fight for people of color and the poor. It's an honor to address the city council, especially you, Ms. Pinya and Ms. Borrego. It's really inspiring and empowering to young women of color to see two strong Latina women who are here representing women of color in this beautiful and diverse city of Albuquerque. I don't have the ability to pay for true adequate services to recover from my devastating experience of being violently raped. Cannabis has enabled me to cope with my PTSD and heal through this traumatic experience. This last summer of 2017, I was pulled over in Gallup, New Mexico, and was charged for adult possession for just having a small amount of marijuana for personal use. The Eighth Amendment supposedly guarantees that punishments are to be fair and not cruel. But where is the fairness when we point to the fault on the people, when the people make the independent choice to medicate and heal themselves through a holistic approach, rather than filling prescriptions and taking medicine from Big Pharma? So we're living in a world that punishes the people while simultaneously allowing these pharmaceutical companies, doctors, insurance providers, to further perpetuate addiction and abuse? The critical point being that thousands of people are swept into the criminal justice system every year, and police are allowed by the courts to conduct fishing expeditions for drugs on the streets. Who are the real criminals? As the legislative authority for the welfare of the people of Albuquerque, I ask that you advocate for the people.
Thank you, Riley. Next speaker, Shakir Abdullah, welcome.
All right. Peace and blessings. My name is Shakir Frieda-Dula. I'm here to talk to you today about a very dire situation that is occurring, and it intersects and occurs simultaneously with this whole conversation, right? And right now, we have the APD with the FBI, BSCO, to sell drugs, to go into the APD evidence locker room and remanufacture narcotics, and then sell them on the street and reverse drug strings to end drug substance abuse. Now, this affidavit that was signed and enacted upon, right, it started in February 2016 and ended in December 2016, all right? But APD lost five pounds of meth in 2017 in a reverse drug string. So basically what I'm saying is that there's severe line of corruption that goes from our federal government, state, and the city. So I'm letting every single one of you know that we're going to hold you all accountable. If you cannot get with these people with them poisoning us, poisoning your children, your nephews, selling this, you're talking about all this crime and these statistics, knowing that APD is selling dope on the streets to our people. And Mr. Benton, I really hope that you pay attention to this, because people of color are dying and being imprisoned behind this. And this is enough. Know that. Know that we are going to rise up, and we're going to be holding you accountable. And if you're not with it, if you're not standing behind the people, we will seek to remove you from your seat. Know that. Every single one of you, and our congresspersons, and state persons, those in the city, state, and federal government, will be held accountable. Know that. Know that. They are poisoning our children. You should be enraged. You should be pissed off.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker.
Especially you.
It's your first warning. Next speaker is Monique Chavez, followed by Paul Ryan McKinney, followed by Brian Scobal, followed by Simon Polakowski. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and councilmembers. My name is Monique Chavez, and I'd like to speak about removing marijuana offenses and penalties. I'm a two-time graduate of UNM, my most recent degree being a JD in 2016. During my time in law school, I found that I was one of few voices that even spoke about cannabis, let alone other drugs. From this, I co-founded a chapter of Students for Sensible Drug Policy and got heavily involved in sensible drug policy and drug policy reform. After I graduated from law school, I founded the chapter of New Mexico Normal and held the first lobby day in conjunction with Cannabis Awareness Day at the Roundhouse. I've attended most medical advisory board meetings and almost all the public meetings as well, and I've been an advocate for those who cannot be with us today. I've also succeeded and struggled at the same time in trying to open an ancillary business in cannabis here in Albuquerque. I urge you guys, members of the council, as an advocate, as a patient, as a small business owner, and as a member of our community, to please vote to decriminalize a plant. This isn't even really a matter of if anymore, it's really a matter of when. Now that over half of our states have some sort of medical program and nine states plus DC have legalized, we need to do this now. Our current laws and policies have been defined by prohibition and resulted in extreme harm to our communities. Since 2014, Santa Fe has decriminalized cannabis for an ounce or less and has seen a decrease in cannabis arrests. We need to stop creating a generation of stigmatized criminals that are forced to grow up in the system because of petty, nonviolent drug offenses. We need to begin to erase the harm that has been done to our minority communities. Let's redirect our tax dollars and limited resources to more serious crimes. Decriminalization does not lead to greater cannabis use, and we've seen that in states where there is decriminalization laws, there's no or less use. We have so much potential in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Next speaker is Paul Ryan McKinney.
Thank you, President Sanchez, councilors. My name's Paul Ryan McKinney, and I'm the chairman of the Libertarian Party of Burnaleo County. The Libertarian Party has been in favor of decriminalizing marijuana and ending the harmful war on drugs since its inception in 1972. We oppose laws against all victimless crimes. No victim, no crime. Everyone knows the racial origins of the war on drugs. In recent decades, the war on drugs has been fueled by the private prisons, their lobbyists, and stockholders. The motivation behind the drug war may have changed, but its origins still remain. It still disproportionately affects our minority communities in Albuquerque. To some, this may seem like a small step, but it is the first step to actually fighting against and ending the violent drug cartels. Milton Friedman once remarked, if, quote, "If you look at the drug war from a purely economic point of view, the role of the government is to protect the drug cartel," end quote. Decriminalization is the first step toward destroying the profits of the cartels and making our city safer. We hope that with the passage of this ordinance, it will usher in a new era of no-victim-no-crime mentality in the city of Albuquerque government. The Libertarian Party of Burnaleo County wholeheartedly supports the decriminalization of marijuana and asks that you vote in favor of 018-12. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Scobal, followed by Simon Polakowski, followed by Pat Gallagher. Welcome.
Yes, my name's Brian Schobel, and I'm a special education teacher for the Albuquerque Public Schools. And I actually just accepted a new job with the University of New Mexico with the Center for Development Disability, which was talked about earlier. I want to come up here in regards to why decriminalization of cannabis is so important. I mean, the people that I've worked with throughout my career right now have varying disabilities who've used cannabis in varying different ways, and the research behind how it truly helps all these different conditions is just amazing. And it just breaks my heart to think about the people who are being discriminated against because of something that happened so far long ago in the '30s in regards to the federal level, in regards to how we were using even the term marijuana to discriminate against people of different colors. We'll just say it straight, what it is. And it's just amazing how fast we've moved right now with the legalization of cannabis in all the different states that we have in regards to medical use, but also in recreational use, which allows people with undocumented disabilities finding cures and finding treatments that they would have never even thought about had those doors not been open for the recreational side. So that is why I've come to talk to you guys about this, just because I sit back most of the time when I come to these meetings, and I listen to what you guys have to say. And, I mean, especially like the taxes, the tax increase that just happened. I was for that tax increase, and I'm for police officers and seeing more law enforcement on the streets, but I want to see resources used correctly. And I think having the prohibition concept of marijuana and this mindset so closed reduces our resources and makes us have to have even higher taxes. So please, support this and decriminalize cannabis in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Polakowski?
Oh, Miss, Laura Dale is here. You called her name, and she either didn't hear it, or she has never called, but she wanted to say it.
Might have been one of the first ones. Go ahead, Laura. Go ahead and proceed.
Just handing out whatever.
Not a problem.
So, President and councilmembers, you know me as the free speech advocate and the supporter of public access, and I'm deeply excited that we've got the RFP coming up. It has me very happy. I'm still very concerned, though, because if you look at this document, this is the Cable Franchise and Hearing Board Recommendation Award to Quote-unquote from 2012. And what's disturbing about this document is this was put on the Cable Board minutes to be looked into, but also, the city, rather than actually voting to award the contract or vote on the Cable Board resolution, City Legal went and drafted another document, which was Recommendation Award to U-Public. Then-President Trudy Jones tabled this document indefinitely. The only thing that was ever voted on was the award for the RFP to U-Public. So this was actually never voted on by the council. So I am deeply concerned about the protocol of how you folks handle this. In these documents is the complaints about how it was handled, and my speech to you tonight is the prayer that this disaster of five years of absolutely no community programming whatsoever ends with this contract, and that the council does due diligence, because you're the ones who are going to be voting on this one. And I pray it's not the vote we had last time. And I pray that things don't get tabled and disappear indefinitely. And you can go into your council minutes and look it up. You can see what's happening. You can see where this disappeared and was never brought back to a vote. The only thing the council voted on was the public access. The other thing I have a question about, and you don't have to answer it, is what is this amending section, RWA, of the Grant of Cable Television Franchise Ordinance to extend the expiration date? Is that anything anyone can explain to me? Or should I?
That'll be discussed later.
Okay.
If you want to stand around for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Simon Polakowski.
I'm here about an article in a weekly that was printed last week informing the public that a new RFP, RFP Proposals for Public Access. The last one, I believe, was a five-year contract, and as the speaker before me said, public access disappeared. I'm hoping, not hoping, but all the people that come here over and over to council or for a first time, all these people are concerned citizens. They need a podium where they can reach to the public for other than two minutes. Public access television is that podium. These people are concerned about their community, their city, their state, their country. They need, the person with no capital needs a place. And issues need to be discussed, hopefully in a civilized manner. And this is what public access is about. This is what I've been coming for, and it should be the whole spectrum. It shouldn't be just one view, it should be everybody's view. Because that, we, we have a First Amendment, freedom of speech. And what does public access do? This allows us to express that amendment, freedom of speech. And this is, we're always told that democracy is measured by the amount of dissent that is allowed. We have not been allowed any dissent through public access in the past five years. And it is also a travesty that the present management, over the five years, we are still presently, that they are extended over and over again. These people that have come up here are genuine, and they need a place to reach out to the public. They want to solve things. They don't want to argue. They want to do real things for the public themselves, their neighbors, and their fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Gallagher, followed by Adrian Carver, followed by Kathy Adams, and the last speaker will be Robert Hernandez. Okay, we got, we're concluded with general public comments. Now let's go to announcements. Counselor Penney.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, April 9th at 5:00 PM in the committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Borego. Okay, that was, this is announcements.
There will be a land use planning and zoning committee meeting on Wednesday, April 11th at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Rico chambers.
Thank you, Counselor Borego, and Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be a Railgards Advisory Board meeting on Wednesday, April 4th at 11:30 in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Thank you, Counselor Benton. We are now under public hearings, there is none this evening. And now we go to item 13, which is approvals. And this is item A, EC-74, Mayor's Appointment of Rebecca Avita to the Albuquerque Development Commission. I move confirmation. May I have a motion and a second? Are there any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item B of approvals, that is EC-78, the appointment of Esteban Aguilar Jr. to the position of Albuquerque City Attorney. I move confirmation.
Second.
May I have a motion and a second by Counselor Borego? Would you like to come up and say a few words? Or from your best, it's fine. Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Sanchez, councilors. I'm eager to work on behalf of the residents of the city of Albuquerque. This is an incredible honor, and I take it very seriously. I've had the opportunity to meet with each, each of you, and everything that I have said in those meetings was, was accurate, and I'm always available for questions, and I'm looking forward to working along with the council and the administration on behalf of the residents of the city of Albuquerque, along with the incredible staff and attorneys at the City Legal Department.
Are there any questions for Mr. Aguilar? See none, all those in favor of his confirmation?
Mr. President.
Counselor Benton.
I, I don't have a question for Mr. Aguilar, and I appreciated our conversation and everything I hear about him is, is, is very positive. My concern is about the process. I think Counselor Winter has some questions about that. I don't know whether he's received any answers about it. I am concerned that we did not have an open and competitive process for this appointment. And this has nothing to do with my belief of whether Mr. Aguilar is the right person for the, for the position. But I just wondered if there are any further comments from the administration on that.
Ms. Nyer.
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, I did have an opportunity to speak further with Counselor Winter, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. The process was open and competitive in the sense that we took a variety of applications from a variety of sources. We didn't really turn any source away, whether they came through NeoGov, whether they directly contacted us. We even had referrals from members of the council, from other city staff members. We considered all of those applications. We interviewed a variety of people, and we determined that Mr. Aguilar was the best candidate for the job. And in our view, that meets every requirement for open and competitive.
Okay, and, and, you know, one, I have heard from other applicants, of course, the reason I'm asking this question, but were there letters sent out to the applicants stating their non, non-appointment?
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, the NeoGov system automatically sends one type of notice, and then if we had other folks who had been engaged in the process through interviews, we did contact them to let them know that they had not been selected. I think the Albuquerque Journal might have beat us to the punch on a couple of those.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none, all those in favor of the appointment of Esteban Aguilar Jr. to the position of the Albuquerque City Attorney's Office? Signify by saying yes? Yes, those opposed say no. Congratulations, you've been appointed unanimously. We are now back on final actions, and we will go to item B, Counselor Jones, O-7.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of a, a stack on something, but this is changing the name, it went through LUPS, and it's changing the name of the Asset Management, the Department of Asset Management, to the Department of Facilities Management and Maintenance. So that is the original ordinance, but I would also like to move a floor amendment. And the floor amendment simply removes, in the initial, in the initial legislation, we had put the real property into this department with, after consulting with real property and property manager and, real property. It was decided that probably this was not the best place for it. So the floor amendment, number one, I assume, is simply removing the real property from the Facilities Maintenance Department.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for floor amendment number one to O-18-7. Are there any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are back on the bill.
Thank you. I would move approval of the bill as amended.
We have a motion and a second to approve O-7 as amended. Counselor Benton, and then Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask the administration if they're on board with this.
Ms. Nyer.
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, yes, we have reviewed and have no problems with the bill as written or as amended.
Thank you.
Counselor Vice President Harris?
I have a same question.
Okay, any other questions? See none, all those in favor of O-7 as amended signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item C, which is O-8. Counselor Jones.
Thank you. This is standard procedure, putting us in, in line with Uniform Administrative Code. So this is adopting a Uniform Administrative Code and Technical Codes prescribing minimum standards, regulating the construction, alteration, moving, repair, and use and occupancies of buildings and structures. Move a do-pass.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? See none, all those in favor of O-8 signify by saying yes? Yes. Okay. And we also have one individual signed up to speak.
Do you want me to move the amendment first?
Let's go move the amendment first. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna move this floor amendment, I guess, number one, to O-18-8. It inserts the following language, following the paragraph, that committee amendment one at the March 12, 2018, Finance and Government Operations inserted, "No new construction, building, and/or demolition permits shall be issued for a site that has an active municipal lien against it until such time that the municipal lien is paid for, is paid to the city in full, or the property owner has agreed to participate in a payment plan to stay, to pay off the lien in full." And if we may, I think that Ms. Schultz might be able to give us a pretty good explanation of why this is necessary, this is needed, rather.
Go on, proceed.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President and Counselor Gibson. This is a recommendation that came out of the Vacant and Abandoned Houses Task Force. This was a recommendation in their report. I cite the portion of the report exactly, Section 2.4. This was a request from the, the Safe City Strike Force to try to recoup some costs that the city ends up bearing indefinitely for certain types of municipal liens. I, I outlined some of them in the floor amendments, such as boarding or securing up a building, if solid waste has to go out to clean up a property. Demolition of a property would also fall under this, and also if the city has to issue a certificate of substandard. Some of these liens cost a couple hundred dollars, some of them cost thousands of dollars, and this would authorize the Planning Department, the authority, to not issue building permits until those liens had been paid back, been paid back to the city. We did write in a clause that says an individual who has a lien against them can enter into a payment plan. If the lien is so expensive that, you know, they can't pay that all upfront, they can come to an agreement with the Planning Department to pay that, that lien back over time if that is more appropriate for them in their budget.
I don't think a lot of the councils have received that amendment. Does that interrupt it? Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselor Jones.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I have no problem with this, this language in the amendment, however, I think it's totally inappropriate in a building code. This is a building code. This is not about getting a permit. This is a building code by which contractors must follow certain terms and conditions in order to build, construct something. It is a, it is the National Building Code, and therefore we are amending ours to conform to the new building code. This has, this just doesn't have anything to do with getting permits, other than you have to conform to the building code to get a permit. But I think, I think I would certainly support this kind of legislation about getting permits, but that's not what this particular ordinance is about. But Ms. Nyer, would you or Mr. Rayle like to weigh in on this?
Mr. Rayle.
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, you're absolutely correct. We are required through the state to adopt the building codes as they're presented through the process. And so for us to amend a building code of this nature is putting more requirements than what the state, you know, authorizes. Counselor Jones is correct. If we would want to do something of this nature, we can do it in a different process and in a different structure within the Planning Department, but not in the building code.
Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and so definitely amenable at looking at that. But this was something that is, we learned from staff just now, that did come from the vacant and abandoned houses, and it's actually a problem. You know, the city is not collecting. The short story is the city's not collecting many of those liens that we should be collecting. So, and I, I think that maybe the decision was made to put it near, and I'll actually let Shauna speak for herself, was that this is like the, the natural stopping point, you know, in either developing a piece of property or redeveloping it or knocking something down, you know? One of the stopping places is getting a building permit. So I'm, I'm absolutely fine with looking at other places to put it. Sounds like you have something in mind already.
Mr. Rayle.
Mr. President and Counselor Jones, obviously, you know, the council's always welcome to introduce a resolution for this sort of thing, but we can also put it in the administrative code and administrative process to deal with that, to ensure that, that we're not, that we're in compliance with, with the purpose of this language. Because we would agree with you, this is the right thing to do as it relates to these facilities or these buildings. But again, it's just really the, this may not be the best place to, to insert that.
Our staff would like to comment?
Mr. President, Mr. Land Clark, the City Planning Department's building official is here, and he might be able to speak more to the appropriateness of this going into our Uniform Administrative Code or not.
Go on, go on, proceed.
Thank you, President, members of the council. The, the original language that was put forth by the Planning Department Building Safety Division was intended to address a particular issue, and this is actually in the ordinance under permit issuance, not under the actual code. It was intended to deal with a particular situation where a, a permit holder extended a, a resolution by this body for demolition for several years through the appeals process in district court. So there was nothing in our ordinance that stopped this particular individual from reapplying for a permit and actually having it issued. The amendment, I think, was a bit of a concern about all of the, of the possibilities that the original language, which was, "Permit will not be issued if the building or structure or systems disposition is pending decision from any city of Albuquerque entity or court of competent jurisdiction." So if it was an appeal, an appeal anywhere, we, although would accept an application, we wouldn't actually issue the permit until that disposition was determined.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Clark. I, I understand what you're trying to get to, but I still believe that this is not the correct place for this. And I'm, I'm unwilling to vote for it at this time. If we can put it in another area, Mr. Rayle, Ms. Nyer, if you can, if you can find a way to do that, I absolutely agree, we need to do this kind of thing, but I don't feel comfortable with it in this uniform code. I think it's, I think it's kind of the wrong place for it.
Counsel Vice President Harris, then we'll go to Counselor Borego.
Yes, thank you. And this, this definitely doesn't belong here, and it, it was also something that's much too complex to do and apply. What I mean by that is we have these municipal liens, and I believe the statute of limitations is four years. Is that correct? And, and the problem with a four-year statute is by the time something like this happens, you might be in year two or year three, and then someone makes an agreement to pay it off, and then that agreement will probably not toll the statute of limitation. So you have an agreement that goes over two or three years, then the, then the lien statute of limitations expires, and then you might be able to make an argument, well, you could even put in the agreement that the lien, the purpose, the person who's subject to the lien will extend the statute, but that's not fair to other lien holders because a municipal lien actually primes mortgages. So I think what we need to do is get our act together. I think we need a separate stat, statute, separate ordinance that actually puts all of the proceeds for enforcing municipal liens in a separate account, and that we actually get after enforcing these liens and get after foreclosing them. And if we were foreclosing these municipal liens, we wouldn't have this problem. I mean, if we just, if they were out there for a year and the city attorney, Mr. Aguilar, just like boom, you file an action, you foreclose the municipal lien, I mean, the word would get out there pretty fast, and people would pay them. And mortgages, or mortgagees, rather, are the appropriate term. Actually, the, yeah, the mortgagee, the, the bank would actually start writing us checks to get rid of these municipal liens and foreclose their mortgages because it's a default under the mortgage to have a municipal lien out there. So I think there's a lot of other things we need to do, I fully support what Counselor Gibson is doing, but I think we need to do a separate standalone provision. I think we need to have a lot of looking at that, a lot of analysis for legal and technical issues, and I also agree it shouldn't be in the building code.
We also have one individual that has signed up to speak on this issue, that's Simon Polakowski.
Mr. Chair, do I get to speak?
We'll come back, then I'm speaking, we'll come back with counsel.
I was just wondering, it says repair. What if a homeowner, does this mean a homeowner has to apply for a permit to repair anything? Let's say a toilet, a sink, or anything? Uh, do you have to apply for a permit for something you do around the, you're able to do around the house yourself? You're not changing anything, you're just fixing something? I mean, uh, that, uh, I don't quite, is that what that means, sir? Is that what this, this proposal means? Uh, you need a permit to do something like that? To fix your toilet?
Counselor Jones.
If I may replay very simplistically, there are some things that even if you do it yourself, you have to do a permit, such as electrical work, plumbing work, gas work. There are certain things that you have to have a permit for.
Oh, I know, but, you know...
And they all have to meet our existing code.
Yeah, well, if you do it to code, I mean, I've...
It doesn't, it's sometimes, especially gas, electric...
Well, gas, you have to have a special license to do gas.
You should, yeah, but we're just trying to protect the citizens. Thank you, Ms. Polakowski.
Thank you. Counsel Burdigo.
Thank you, Ch, Mr. Chair. I know I am the new counselor. You know, I think the original bill gets back to a regulatory, uh, code requirements, and this particular bill, I mean, floor substitute, really relates back to more administrative, um, and possibly, possibly what Counselor Harris said about maybe looking at municipal liens, and how they're, um, how they're enacted or, and, and collected. So I think that this is not the, I agree with Counselor, uh, Jones, this is not the appropriate place for this, and, um, so I won't be supporting the floor substitute.
Thank you. Let's go back to the sponsor of the amendment, uh, Counsel Gibson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I, I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw this amendment, and we'll find another way to, uh, more appropriate way of making this happen.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. We are back on the bill. Counselor Jones to close.
Well, thank you for your support.
We have a motion and a second for oh dash eight. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item D. Counselor Davis and Counselor Benton, oh dash twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh dash twelve is amending the criminal code of Albuquerque to remove marijuana offenses and related penalties, amending chapter eleven of the Code of Ordinances to establish civil penalties for possession of one ounce or less of marijuana, para, uh, one ounce or less of marijuana paraphernalia. Is that a typo? I move a due pass.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis, and we have a few individuals sign up to speak on this issue this evening. Uh, the first speaker will be Deborah Blayton, followed by Anna Moran, followed by Emily Colteckback, followed by Riley Escalada, followed by Shakir Abdullah. Looks like they have all departed, we have...
Ms. Coltenbach is here, Mr. President.
Ms. Coltenbach, go on, proceed, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council. My name is Emily Coltenbach, I'm the State Director of the Drug Policy Alliance. We represent over two thousand members in the city of Albuquerque, and close to five thousand members statewide. Um, we fight to, um, encourage sensible drug policies that are rooted in health, uh, that are health-centered approaches, and we're honored to be here tonight to stand in favor of this ordinance. Um, this measure would bring Albuquerque in line with one-third of the United States population that has a ready, that live in jurisdictions that have already decriminalized small amounts of marijuana. In fact, the state of Oregon decriminalized over forty years ago, uh, Santa, the city of Santa Fe, three years ago, and in fact, Jackson, Mississippi, just in February, the city council voted unanimously, uh, to decriminalize and reduce penalties for marijuana. So Albuquerque should be next. Why would we continue to put our children and our police at risk by stretching our law enforcement resources beyond their means to address nonviolent, uh, low-level crimes that do not harm our community? And Albuquerque's families deserve to have the, have police with the resources, um, and training to deal with dangerous crime. This vote is about promoting public safety. Enacting common sense marijuana policies like this reflect the values of a majority of Americans, and actually, a majority of the citizens in Albuquerque. And I just wanna end by saying that in two thousand and fourteen, that, um, voters in every single city council district voted in favor of reducing penalties, uh, for marijuana. So I look forward to working with all of you and with the mayor on, um, implementing sensible marijuana reforms in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Marvin Wafer, followed by Paul Ryan McKinney, and the last speaker will be Brian Scobal. Welcome.
Mr. President, city councilors, city of Albuquerque, my name is Marvin Wafer, and I'm just a concerned citizen. I strive for a living, delivering. I, this subject comes up constantly where I deliver, in my workspace, and I hear the argument of, we don't have enough resources, and that is true, we don't. But, um, and I agree with it. We, we, we don't have the time or resources to go after the small amounts of marijuana, people that just, uh, have small amounts. But it's a tool. It's a tool that the police can use investigating further crimes, or other crimes, or other criminal behavior, that they can use this tool to hold somebody while the investigation goes forward. It's also, you know, what's next? We don't have enough time, we don't have the resources to go after, oh, the people doing the vitamins, so we're just gonna deal with that later, too. There's, there's, uh, there's another alternative to making a law that we can't repeal if necessary later. Okay? I think it's best practices, okay? Have the police make the judgment. I'm not gonna go after this person if I have a priority call. I'm not gonna go searching for people in case I get a prob, uh, priority call. But if the subject comes up in a criminal investigation, it is a tool that can be used to further this investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Ryan McKinney, and the last speaker will be Brian Scobal. So if you wanted to come up to speak one more time, come to the front, please. Welcome back.
Thank you, President Sanchez, councilors. I just wanted to make a few personal remarks on the subject. Um, I'm kind of an odd person to advocate for the decriminalization of marijuana. I don't use marijuana, I never have. I don't use alcohol or tobacco, don't do any drugs. So why do I advocate for decriminalization? Well, I don't believe enforcing my personal beliefs on others. I do not believe that is the responsibility of government to legislate morality. I also vehemently oppose fining people and throwing them in jail for their vices. If there is no victim, there is no crime. Everyone has their vices. Alcohol, tobacco, caffeine, and marijuana are all in common use. At one time, while I was in the air force, I was drinking four to five energy drinks a day. There's no doubt that's bad for ya. Happy to be alive. But I'm also happy that you didn't find me and throw me in jail for abusing, uh, caffeine that way. At times, I'll relax, watch TV, eat a pint of Ben &amp; Jerry's. I know, it's hard to tell looking at me, but I got a bad eating habit, or two. However, other folks like to sit back, crack open a cold beer, and watch the game, perfectly fine, and some folks like to sit back and relax and enjoy some cannabis use. What's the problem? Why is that all of a sudden criminal, but other ways of relaxing aren't? Many things are harmful, yet people aren't thrown in jail for them. It's well-known that prolonged use of ibuprofen causes stomach ulcers. Something being harmful is not a reason to make it illegal. I'd like to thank councilors Davis and Benton for bringing this forward, and I ask that you please vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Scobal.
Just like to say thank you for letting me speak again. I think the biggest thing, too, is it's, it's just plain discrimination. I mean, we've already proven the discrimination against people of color. But now, like, when you look at it even more specifically, it's also discriminating against people who are poor. I mean, all people who are poor. I mean, especially in our state in regards to the medical cannabis program that is very expensive. I mean, people have already talked about this at the state level, and the cannabis board has also talked about it in regards to the renewal process and the costs in regards to renewing that. I mean, the plain and simple fact is, the medical side is very expensive. So taking that out of the quotient, who's really being penalized when you look at these criminalization and these arrests and these tools, if you wanna call them that, um, are people who are poor, people who can't afford the medical diagnosis, people who can't afford to obtain their cannabis in a legal way to treat their medical needs, okay? And who have had the legal and prescription prescribed by a doctor because they can afford those, those vices, let's call those tools. I mean, those are the real tools discriminating against people who are poor. So really looking at this, I mean, you have to support it just because of the common sense fact of discrimination alone. As for resources, it's going to allow police to have more time and more resources to go against car theft, vandalism, and the things that we already know that are plaguing our city right now, especially with the higher increases that we've already seen from the last time when we looked at the tax increases. I mean, you guys saw all the data on that one, it was just unreal, the percentages for increases in crime. So I'd rather see police handling those kinds of instances than these minor little things in regards to discrimination. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, that closes the general public comment on this agenda item, and we will now open the floor to the council. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will go to closing. Counselor Davis, Counselor Benton. Counselor Davis?
This is a lot, I realize it's getting late, this is a lot easier than the last time we did this. Some of you remember me, Emily and I, from, what, five years ago, uh, when we stood on the other side of this podium at the end of a ballot initiative, uh, to collect tens of thousands of signatures in Albuquerque, urging this council to pass legislation that decriminalized marijuana then. Uh, we ultimately took that all the way to the state supreme court. This council passed a bill that was vetoed by the previous mayor, um, and so I appreciate very much the chance to be here and, uh, and to carry this forward again with Counselor Benton, who was a big advocate for getting this done the first time around. In terms of the legislation, not much has changed. Uh, it's exactly the same legislation we put forward a few years ago. Uh, the only update is that it includes a provision and carve-out, um, to address some of the concerns we heard tonight, and it specifically prohibits, uh, the police from charging a person with a valid medical marijuana card, an important provision that recognizes the medical importance of cannabis in New Mexico, uh, and to be sure that those folks aren't unnecessarily targeted. Uh, but at the end of the day, our police officers have simply more important things to do, and of the hundreds of people we've heard come to the city council and complain and ask for more help, um, I think one thing we can tell them when doing this, assuming that the mayor will sign it, um, is that we're here looking for ways to do just that. If you are sitting at home, waiting on a police officer to respond to a burglary or something worse, the last thing you wanna know in Albuquerque is that the nearest police officer is in the middle of three hours of paperwork on a petty marijuana arrest, or if you've been the victim of a burglary or a sex crime, the last thing you wanna know is that your rape kit or your fingerprint is stuck in line behind a petty drug test at the drug lab that takes hundreds of dollars and several hours worth of paperwork and work to do. Um, and so this is simply getting Albuquerque on the right track. It helps to get, uh, where, thanks to Santa Fe's work a few years ago, now half of New Mexico will live in a place where marijuana is decriminalized, and if a police officer feels it is so important, as so to issue a citation for possession of a small amount of marijuana, uh, she can do so, give you a ticket, be back on her way in about five minutes, and you can go online and pay it just like your parking ticket, and will happily take your twenty-five dollars. And it way beats having to check a box for the rest of your life that keeps you out of a scholarship or a job. And so I appreciate very much, uh, Counselor Benton continued to work on this with us for the years, and I appreciate the administration's support, I'd love to hear their thoughts. Um, and I particularly appreciate the Police Officer Union, APOA, who joined us in announcing this legislation when we announced it la, earlier this year, because they know that there are more important things to do than this, and we appreciate that very much. So, and with that, uh, if the administration has any message, I'd encourage their, uh, comments, but thank you for indulging me from the council, and I urge your support as well.
Are there any comments, Ms. Nyer?
Uh, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis, we don't really have anything to add, you summed it up well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor for oh dash twelve. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes? Those opposed?
No.
That carries on a five to four vote.
Mr. Chair, may I explain my vote?
Counsel Burdigo? Yes.
Um, well, as I said before, I'm the newest counselor. I grew up in Espanola, New Mexico, till the age of seventeen, where I, um, was, um, I understood that we are, and I still understand, that we are the highest in per capita for drugs. And so, you know, supporting a bill that, um, there's not really any empirical evidence, and I've done my research on this in the last couple of days, because, you know, I, I do support medical marijuana. I have friends who do medical marijuana. But in terms of marijuana itself, um, there's no, I mean, there's no empirical evidence that shows, um, the relationship between, um, a reduction in crime and decriminalizing marijuana. And, um, I've looked at several articles, um, nationally, and compared different states. So that's one of the reasons that I'm not supporting this bill. I, it concerns me that there are people out there who purchase marijuana, probably illegally, and you don't know what it's laced with. It could be laced with, uh, PCBs, it could be laced with, um, excuse me? It could be laced with any, any, um, possibility of drugs. So not really being able to regulate that really concerns me that, you know, and I'm, I'm not even sure that the council is really the place that we should be doing this at, possibly the state legislature where we can tax marijuana and really doing, doing it in a way that's regulated so that people are not prone to some safety issue in the future. So that's one of, those are reasons that I'm not supporting this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to the next item, that's Counselor Jones, oh dash thirteen.
Mr. President, just before, I'm gonna recuse myself on this item.
Okay. Counselor Winter is recusing himself?
Um, thank you. This is, um, oh thirteen, amending section thirteen-five, whatever, the grant of cable television franchise ordinance to extend the expiration date by an additional six months from April first, twenty eighteen, to October first, twenty eighteen. And the reason this is happening is, uh, city is in negotiations, and unfortunately, they, agreement can only be extended for six-month terms. So we, in order to keep the negotiations going, we have to extend this for six months. Hopefully, it won't take that long. So, uh, councilors, um, I move a due pass.
We have a motion and a second. We have one individual that has signed up to speak, Colleen Gorman. It looks like Colleen has left the building. Counsel Burdigo.
Sorry. The, um, I guess RFP would be, is, is in process, currently in process, and that's the only reason we're granting the six months. Is that correct?
President Sanchez, Counsel Burdigo, no, the RFP process timeline is still intact. This just permits the, uh, parties to continue finalizing the negotiations.
Stephanie?
Yes, um, President Sanchez, Counsel Burdigo, actually, the RFP that was referred to earlier is for the public access television. This is actually the franchise agreement with Comcast, allowing them to provide cable services to the city. That, um, contract is currently in negotiation, it is not subject to a competitive bid process, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Jones to close.
Sorry about that. Thank you, and please support this.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of oh dash thirteen. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. Uh, we are now on item F. Counselor Davis, oh dash four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, oh dash four directs the Albuquerque Police and Fire Departments to establish a training program in cooperation with the Autism Society, uh, to help first responders... identify and respond to persons with autism. Um, we have speakers here today, but let me just introduce this by saying, um, it's notable that today is, uh, National Autism Awareness Day and the first day of International Autism Awareness Month. That just happened to work out for us today. Um, I think it's an important piece, and our speaker will tell us a little bit about, uh, how that works, and so, uh, I believe Ms. Baca signed up on the public list anyway, so I'll let you go to that.
Okay, we have Sarah Baca. Welcome, Ms. Baca.
Thank you very much, President Sanchez and City Council. My name is Sarah Baca, and I'm here in two capacities this evening. I am honored to be the Executive Director of the New Mexico Autism Society, and, um, even more importantly, I am the parent of a 10-year-old child named Preston who happens to have autism. Usually, I bring Preston to things like this because you can look at him, and he looks like any other neurotypical 10-year-old, and that's why I'm here today. I'm here representing the autism community who, when first responders approach or come into contact with individuals with autism, you couldn't necessarily tell that they're, that they have an ability that may interfere with interactions with first responders. So I appreciate Counselor Davis for bringing this initiative forward. I really appreciate APD and AFD for their responsiveness to this training and realize how important it is to the community. I am even more honored that it's happening this evening on World Autism Awareness Day and on autism, and during Autism Awareness Month. I appreciate your support, and again, um, couldn't tell you how much this means to the community. I sent out a call to action today, and I know many parents, individuals, um, on the autism spectrum reached out to you all and thanked you for their support. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. We did have a chance to meet your son at the finance meeting. He was there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Harris?
Well, I know this is going to be kind of a popular feel-good kind of a bill, but I have concerns when we had, you had another homicide today. We've had one almost every day for the past week or so, and, uh, we have a police officer shortage of about 400 cops. Um, we have a DOJ with, uh, who's in our grill, and we're having to do all kinds of training to comply with what the Department of Justice is requiring us to do. And I am just loathe to put a single word in their training manuals that isn't there already and isn't going to be required by a federal judge. So I, I just have, uh, that concern about this bill. But, uh, really, maybe I'll give the sponsor an opportunity to, to discuss that.
Counselor Gibson, and then we'll go back to Counselor Davis.
Um, I appreciate hearing the words of Counselor Harris, um, but I would come back with, that's exactly why we need this. Because of all of the things that can go wrong between two people who can communicate well to begin with, and how quickly that degrades when communication is, um, stymied on, on either side or on both sides of, of that equation. I have a very good friend who has a grown son, um, who is profoundly autistic, and, um, she and her husband worry about this young man every single day. Uh, he's a grown man now. He was in school for as long as he could be in school for, for autism and, and, uh, and did really well. But, you know, there came a time when, you know, he had to graduate, and, uh, his parents are afraid to leave him anywhere by himself. Uh, I think just recently, they got him into a, a group home where I think he, it sounds like he's doing pretty well. But she has told me many times over the past year since I've been on council how afraid she is of our police department, and not because she thinks badly of, of our, uh, police officers, not because she thinks badly about anybody. She, but she knows her son. Her son, if he's told to go over there and sit down on that curb, may just as easily stand up and walk the other way. And, and, and not out of any, um, uh, not thoughtfully to, to disregard orders, but that's, that's his limitations. And, um, so I, I thank Counselor Davis for putting forth this. And, uh, I, I think that it's, it's something that we need to do, you know? So, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate Counselor Davis, um, doing this as well. Um, I don't know if this would be the appropriate time or not, but, you know, I have a, a brother who is developmentally, um, disabled, who actually is a, a grown adult, too, and I think this, a training of this sort would be, um, would be important for, um, the developmentally delayed community as well, because, um, my brother, you wouldn't know it seeing him, but, um, his gait is off and, you know, walking and his ability to communicate i- isn't really there, so I can see where this could be, um, a real problem for him as well. So, um, thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Borrego?
What about people who have PTSD or, you know, have other, um, I mean, is, would it make more sense to look at a bill that creates, you know, special training for a lot of different types of, you know, of, um...
Sure.
Situations?
Mr. President, if I may respond to, to both Counselor Borrego and Counselor Harris both, I think they go together. Uh, in New Mexico, police officers are required to undergo 40 hours of biannual training. 20 hours of that is mandated by the state legislature, and the other 20 hours is determined by our local department. Here in Albuquerque, the department now goes through a DOJ process, um, to work through their training to figure out what those extra local 20 hours per year are, and they're determined on what the community's needs are and requests are. Historically, over the last four years, um, we've devoted about 10 perc- 10 of those 20 hours to use of force and behavioral health responses, and this falls into that category. So it is incorporated into, and it has the support of our police department, as we heard at the Finance Committee, because it falls into the work they're already doing. The challenge for this, and you're right, Counselor Borrego, we have the Mental Health Advisory Committee that's helping them develop these training schedules, and they're being developed every year as we encounter new opportunities. What we've learned, however, is that the challenge for people on the autism spectrum is that it's a very particular, it's very different in the way public, uh, first responders respond. As a police officer, if I come to question a person that is on the spectrum and they don't recognize my authority or choose not to respond to my question, simply where, what is your name, or why are you here? That can be interpreted as someone who's being non-responsive and being obstructionist, and that can lead to a use-of-force situation that's not necessary. And I know our fire department and paramedics are here, and, uh, they encourage them to weigh in if they want to weigh in here as well, because it's important for them. For a person with autism who can't communicate their concern, what we teach our first responders, the first thing to do is to lay hands-on, to check pulse, to check out someone. But for a person with autism who responds negatively to touch, that can lead to a violent encounter. And so it is absolutely a part of the ongoing development of APD's, uh, use-of-force and behavioral health, but this is special. And the Autism Society has partnered with police departments around the country to develop a very specific curriculum, uh, for first responders to identify those challenges and how to respond to them so that we don't accidentally create situations that lead to either the, the resident with autism or a first responder being injured. And we've seen that happen here in Albuquerque, particularly in our schools, uh, in a couple instances I know of students with autism who ended up, um, in use-of-force situations, and we don't want that to happen.
We have members of the Albuquerque Fire Department and Police Department, would you like to come up and make a couple of comments? State your name for the record and position.
My name's Matt Tenny. I'm a detective. I'm one of the CIT coordinators for the Police Department.
My name is Captain Martin Salazar. I'm the EMS Training Captain for Albuquerque Fire Department.
I'm shorter. It's a work, it's a little bit more.
Go ahead, proceed.
So, I mean, I can only speak on, on the Police Department's behalf, so I overview and oversee all the mental health and behavioral health-related training for APD, and we're always adapting and evolving our curriculum. Um, we took back over the curriculum in 2015, and so I can definitely see, and we partner with the National Alliance of Mental Illness, we had the National Art come out and talk about, uh, updating some of our curriculum. As it relates to people living with autism and developmental disability, I don't think it's hard. Um, some of the stuff that I think we're, a lot of people are not familiar with, with New Mexico, is we actually lead the nation in the requirements for behavioral health training. So just to be a peace officer, so have the arrest authority, in this state, you're required to take 40 hours of mental health training in this basic academy. So here in, in Albuquerque, you get additional 20 hours in your baseline academy on top of that. And topics including that is autism, as well as other developmental disabilities, the approach and de-escalation strategies. Once officers here graduate, they have to take an additional 40 hours of a crisis intervention team course, which continues that advanced training, to include more on autism and developmental disability, including, again, scenarios. And we also conduct weekly, national and to Canada now, teleconferencing. So we'll bring in different providers, and I think they might have talked at last IMRAC about that, where they present on, give different didactics, and we staff cases. So we do have ongoing training that's already in place. Um, again, the only thing that I know with the settlement agreement and some of the findings we found with curriculum, unfortunately, if it is kind of like a cookie cutter, we found that doesn't quite work well in our community, unfortunately, and our needs assessments have shown that the collaboration is a big part. So, I mean, we welcome any organization that's here locally or nationally, if they want to provide any information that we don't already carry.
Counsel Vice President Harris has a question for you.
So, uh, are you responding to my concern that this is not going to impose any additional burdens on APD?
So, i- if it's not an additional on top of what all we currently do, because I think currently just a peace officer gets over 200 hours of mental training, so, I mean, we can incorporate it and, and revamp some of the pre-existing curriculum, as long as it's not sta- state mandated. Um, we have identified some issues in the state, and hopefully, if you guys are advocates for that, you can also, uh, push that forward. We are trying to actually rewrite the state curriculum for them. So, I mean, we can always adapt it to what's currently in place.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Borrego.
Um, so, just to get back to my question about PTSD and other, uh, special needs, is, is, does the curriculum also allow for those types of training within, just so I'm clear?
Yes. I mean, one of the unique things about APD for this matter, you know, we've had a history of use-of-force with people with behavioral health crisis, you know, that's been identified. We've not had this big push when it comes to developmental disabilities, and one of the things we, people don't seem to understand, we hire adelante, so it's, it's individuals living with a developmental disability, and it could be autism, and we, as police officers, see them daily. We interact with them, so it becomes normal. We learn some of these cues, just day-to-day interactions, like you might have with your brother. But with PTSD, this is a, a trend that has a lot more research recently in vet population, so it has been identified. It's currently taught through all, um, levels, and our recertification course coming up for enhanced CIT, it was identified to include more in PTSD.
Any comments from the Fire Department?
Um, as with the Albuquerque Police Department, we also have training prep programs in place where every year we run two classes of continuing education, 33 days each, a day one and a day two. Within our day two, we incorporate mental health, and this year, we're looking at incorporating, um, New Mexico Auti- uh, Society's autism program. So we have things like that, and we, working with APD, we go to meetings together, um, and collaborate, because at the end of the day, it's all for the, the better good of the citizens of Albuquerque, and by all of us working together, and I understand the concerns, it's not just autism, it is PTSD. I'm a vet myself, I'm one of the peer mentors, so we deal with other fire department personnel. He does the same thing on his side, so we're working together. So it won't be a burden on either of the departments, because it's something we already have in place.
Thank you. Let's go back to, uh, Counselor Davis to close.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I can't say it better than these gentlemen have done. We appreciate it very much. Uh, it helps us align our training with those standards and helps us bring some resources, um, and get that certification to let other folks know that we're doing it right, and so we encourage your support.
We have a motion and a second to approve R-dash-four. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Uh, we have deferred, uh, item G, R-11. We are under the, now under the final item, item H. Counselor Benton, R-dash-15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, R-15 is designating workforce housing trust funds for an affordable housing project. I move a do-pass.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
And...
Are there any questions? Counselor Benton to close.
Mr. President, yeah, just, uh, this is a fairly humble, uh, change. This is the, those who remember, the city, uh, worked with the county to purchase the brown construction company site on North Forest Street, uh, a few years back. We're very close to, in fact, expecting to have, uh, community charrette to, to, uh, discuss what will be the best scheme or general parameters for, for developing the site, and, uh, these funds are really just to kind of keep, uh, keep security in place and, and, uh, keep the site clean and safe while, while we, uh, move forward, hopefully in the very near future with a request or proposal from developers for, for redevelopment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve R-dash-15. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. If there is no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.